Board of Appeal, roll call. Mr. Champetti?
Here.
Mr. Palmero is here. Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Delisle?
Here.
Ms. Webb?
Here.
All present and a quorum.
Great, we have a quorum. So, we can move to our business meeting. The first matter on our business meeting is election of officers. Do we have a nomination for slate of officers?
I'll make a motion for slate. I'd like to nominate Rob Champetti for Chair, Ed Cameron Vice Chair, and Maureen Palmero, Secretary.
Motion is made.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor of the slate as moved and seconded?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. The slate of officers is adopted. So, what we have next is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. We have the minutes from December 10th, draft minutes. And for members in the audience and anyone watching at home, of course, all of the minutes and all of this material is available at the city's website. You go onto the planning office, click on the link for zoning board of appeals, and there are PDFs as well as hyperlinks to all of the materials, all of the plans, all of the minutes. Essentially, everything that we see, everything that's been presented, is accessible via the website. So, we have the minutes. Do we have a motion or any changes?
Motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, 2019.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The minutes are adopted. So, before we get into the request for minor modification, let me just take a moment and sort of walk everyone for those of you that are new to the zoning board of appeals, haven't been to this kind of a forum. This is the way our board works and the planning board, I'm sure, works very similarly. So, we move through an agenda. Usually, the matters that have been continued from a previous hearing will be first on the agenda in terms of sequence. We will let you know and will be saying out loud whether this has been continued and from what other meeting. The way, the format and the flow is as follows. We will read the legal notice if it's a new application. The legal notice is the document that was published in the Newburyport Daily News as well as sent out to abutters. This material is also available on the city's zoning board of appeals website. If it's a continuance, we will invite the applicant or the applicant's representatives, engineers, attorneys, other professionals, to come to this side of the table, to feel free to use or set up an easel and any other materials right in this general area so everyone can see, and to then present to the board the continuation of their application. New this evening, and I'll point this out at this point, we have obviously the broadcast and carry on closed circuit or public circuit television, so we have microphones in the room. When we get to the portion of the evening when we hear from members of the public, whether they wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to, or not sure, just merely want to voice my thoughts on an application, we will ask you to step forward to that microphone. Don't be nervous, just come forward and, you know, and say what's on your mind. We do ask that for the benefit of our note taker that you please state your name and your address for the record. For those that will be presenting on this side of the table, we have a handheld mic, and that's sitting right there. It's already in the on position. The mics are sensitive so that you don't have to hold it all the way up. Just be mindful that, you know, anywhere down here is sufficient so that it can both be broadcast and carried through the television broadcast. So, getting back to the format and the flow, we will read a public notice. We will then ask to hear from the applicant after we read the legal notice into the record. The applicant will then present the application to the board. Again, any materials that are being presented will be presented in your ability to see and fully view that will be via that easel right here. Going forward, the boards, the board aspires to, with the planning office, aspires to publish this so that at home you can actually follow along and see the materials electronically so we won't be as dependent on an easel. We're hoping to set up a screen and a projector so that you can follow along. And everything that we're seeing, everything that's being referenced to, you don't have to hold a set of plans in your hand, you'll be able to simply look up at a screen. I'm pointing in this direction because I'm imagining a screen right here. And that'll make things easier, but that will be in hopefully the next meeting to come. So, we have the applicant will present the application, then we'll open it up to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application. Come forward, step to the mic. Anyone in opposition, same thing. Anyone who's not sure, same thing. Once we close that part of the hearing, we then go to questions from the board. That's the phase of the hearing when we, when the members of the board will ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's representatives or professionals, and there will be a dialogue between the board and the applicants. The board can also inquire into, you know, with questions as a result of things that they have heard from members of the audience that have spoken in support or opposition to. After questions from the board is closed out, the board then goes into deliberations, and that's, that's sort of the section of the meeting when the board will discuss out loud so that you may hear and follow along, the contemporaneous thinking of the board with respect to what their thoughts are on the, you know, the applicant's presentation, any questions, any problems, any, you know, anything favorable. All of that will be discussed out loud. Once the deliberation section concludes, a member of the board will make a motion, and that motion will be seconded either, and the motion will be to approve an application, and then the vote will determine whether the application actually carries. There's a 20-day appeal period on any approved application, though the planning office can give you information on whether an applicant, a successful applicant, may wish to proceed at their own sort of, you know, at builder's risk, as they say, or at homeowner's risk. So, with that, we can start our actual business meeting, or the last item on our business meeting, which is a request for minor modification, 31 Johnson Street. May we hear from the app?
Did you already signal the recording?
What's that? Oh, actually, thank you very much. Just one note, and sorry, George. Because we're actually, we're recording this evening's meeting on this device, on our recorder, because if we have a vacancy on the board, if we have a new member that joins the board, if there's a member that's absent, they can qualify themselves even though they weren't here by listening to the transcribed recording. And in the wiretap laws of the Commonwealth, we have to disclose that we're recording it. That's it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Abelton from Windward Shop. Stepping in for the homeowner tonight, Mr. Jeffrey Manheimer. I have some supporting documentation that I believe you should all have copies of, but just in case, I wasn't sure what was given to the staff. So, I'm going to pass this out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stepping in for Mr. Manheimer, which I hope is a simple minor modification to an existing special permit. If you look at the site plan, you can see in red detailed the new proposed location of a single car garage. There was, in the existing special permit, there was a garage that was proposed that was pushed farther back toward the backyard, which I don't know if the topo was available at the time when they went through the special permit process, the former developer. But it's, it would be pretty difficult to put the garage that far back. So, when Mr. Manheimer purchased the property from the developer, we ended up going back and forth and coming up with a better location for the garage. So, I'm here to ask for that minor modification, and I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that as well? No? Good. Okay. Excellent. I know that you have the notes from Mr. Manheimer, so.
All right. Do you have any questions? Is this a minor modification or is it a very simple correction and deliberations from the board?
One question. You do have a letter of support here from 29 Johnson. Is that the same side as the garage is going to be built?
Yes. Yep. Correctly adjacent to the garage. That's the neighborhood.
Thank you.
That was my question as well. So, is the proposed garage, again, this looks like a similar setback to the side?
Yes.
Is it smaller than what was originally proposed?
I believe it is smaller. I don't have the exact dimension of what was previously proposed, but to the best of my knowledge, it is a lot shorter. I'm pretty sure it's not as wide either from what was originally proposed. They're obviously pretty limited with the side setback and the proximity to the house, and I've encouraged them to make it as wide as it is now to keep you that distance between the house and the garage to keep it, to make sure it's not awkward looking.
Thank you. All set? No questions?
I don't have any questions. Any other questions? Ms. Webb?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Do you, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deem this a minor request and approve the minor modification to the special permit and special permit for nonconformities for 31 Johnson Street. Two thousand, and the file numbers were 2008-013 and file 2018-014.
Seconding it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve 31 Johnson Street application, application number 2018-014 to approve the minor modification. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Mr. Palmero is. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
I think it's a roll.
All right. Motion carries. The modification is approved. Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Moving to the first public hearing. Yes?
A reminder from me on procedure, sir, since we have six members present, we only need five voting, correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
The first continuation of a public hearing is a continuation from the meeting of November 12th, 2019, 19 Marlborough Street LLC, care of Mark Griffin Esquire. The matter is a special permit for nonconformities to construct in addition to the existing three-family structure where three-family use is nonconforming. Attorney Griffin, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Griffin, I'm an attorney at Finnerman &amp; Nicholson, representing the applicant, 19 Marlborough Street LLC. Principal of that entity is Blake Wilcox. He's here right behind me. And as you know, we're here for a special permit for nonconformities. I'll go through briefly the history of this application. In November, we brought a plan in front of the board, and that plan showed garage space for six cars, basically all added to the building. And, you know, what we heard from the board and what we heard from the abutters and the neighborhood was that the project as proposed was too large, that there was too much garage space, and that it basically was too massive. So, what we did at the board's advice and also from taking the abutters' input, my client went and spoke with neighbors, many of which are here tonight, and redesigned the project, submitted an amended plan. That amended plan was accompanied by a cover letter, which I wrote, which basically iterated the changes. And the changes were fairly significant, removing all of the garage space that was attached to the home and reducing the massing of the addition accordingly. Since that plan was filed, a further plan, a further amended plan, was also submitted as a result of my client speaking with a director abutter at 2 Lincoln Street. And so, the final iteration of the plan is what I've got on the board in front of you, and you should have copies. If you don't, I can hand them out.
They do.
We have them.
If anybody doesn't have the most current plan, I can hand, I have paper copies.
I don't have one for the files, so I'll take that for the file. Thank you, sir.
And so, really, there's only one change, but it is a fairly significant change, and that is the detached garage was removed from the plan. So, you know, the amended, the second amended plan, if you will, eliminates all garage space. So, right now, the parking is going to be in the driveway rather than in any enclosed area. And so, as I mentioned, this is a significant decrease in the original addition, and it completely changed the size and the look of the addition. The original design called for about 3,500 square feet of additional space. The amended design calls for approximately 1,170 square feet. So, you know, less than half of what we originally brought forward. The reduction was very significant with respect to improving the dimensional, proposed dimensions. And so, you know, we had significant improvements in open space, went up 4 percent. Lot coverage was reduced by 7 percent. Actually, I'm talking about the first amended plan. So, the second amended plan reduced lot coverage from 39.58 percent all the way down to 26.47 percent. So, again, a significant reduction and well below the requirement of no more than 40 percent, I believe it is. So, you know, and again, the 520 square feet worth of garage was also eliminated, so further reduction in lot coverage. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Landjes, and he's going to speak to the amended plan and just sort of go through the changes from the first plan in more detail than I just did. You've got to do this fronthand. You need a microphone.
I'm Matt Landjes from Scott Brown Architects, 38 Madison Street, Amesbury. We've worked pretty hard decreasing the size and massing of the overall, the addition, but I just want to walk through a summary of changes, highlight what we've done. The massing and square footage are over 50 percent smaller. It's actually closer to around 60. Actually eliminated six covered, you know, the garage spaces, which is six covered parking spaces. Now, there's, there's no covered parking spaces, but as, as Mark mentioned, they're all along the side of the property and two in the rear of the property as well. So, the exterior parking is essentially along the property edge and in the rear of the lot. The addition is 18 and a half feet off of the existing back property here, which ends up being six and a half feet off the existing deck. It was 20 previously. The existing roof remains with the exception of a seven, a seven-foot extension of this existing ridge here. So, this massing is the only part that's new. All of this, including the chimney, the roof, all of these spaces are all going to remain existing. So, we've worked to replace the, we're going to work to replace the siding and the trim and the windows for added detail in a way that we think accentuates the historic character of this property, but in a way that we believe is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. What we've done on the side here is create sort of a secondary or like a modified portico entrance to give this unit a little bit more separation. The front elevation is essentially the same as the last, the last iteration, and the majority of the changes on this side have to do with the size and the massing, but light windows, using simulated divided light, double hungs, and we, you know, we've been working pretty hard to decrease this. So, again, we feel it's, it's not more of a detriment to the city and hope you guys, hope the board and the abutters agree as well. And Scott and I are here for any other questions and be happy to talk a little bit more about it.
And so, I went through during the first hearing, you know, why we thought that the project was eligible for a special permit for nonconformities, and I'll just briefly go through it again. Certainly, making the same case for it except with a plan that is very much reduced in impact. So, in order to obtain a special permit for nonconformities under the Newburyport zoning ordinance, section 9B-2B, you have to meet some criteria. The first is that there is no intensification or extension of an existing nonconformity or addition of a new nonconformity. That is the case here. No new nonconformities and no extension of existing. There is only one nonconformity, and that's the front setback, and we're not touching that. The proposed home will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. It's not going to, like I said, intensify any existing nonconformities. It's going to be built in what we think is a premium quality design that is very sensitive to the existing historic structure and those in the neighborhood. We also believe that we are improving the property based on the condition, the current condition of the existing house, which I would describe as tired. And, you know, for a three-family building, this is a modest addition, I would state, and also that all the parking is going to be on-site. And so, while we would have preferred covered parking, we are at least keeping cars off the street, which I think is a benefit to the neighborhood, and being sensitive to the neighbors by virtue of removing the covered parking, which they objected to. So, in summation, we believe that our project will not be, not only will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, we think it's going to be a positive influence on the neighborhood, but it certainly won't be substantially more detrimental. And for that reason, we respectfully request that you grant the special permit for nonconformities. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Griffin, was there anything else as part of your presentation?
That, yes.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll move to the questions of the members of the public. Anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application? Ma'am, yes.
Sorry?
And again, we invite you to, if you could, come to the microphone, please, and then just give our note taker your name and address.
I'm Linda Levis Coulson, number 2 Lincoln Street. And it's true, when we had our first meeting, that the neighbors were all horrified by the size of what they were originally planning to build. But I must say, Mr. Blake and his team have really worked very, very hard to downsize the building and make it more reasonable. But I still, when I saw their last plan, was very unhappy because it was, again, another garage, this time over in the corner of the house that would be right against my yard, my fence, and block my entire view of the trees and the grass. Mr. Wilcox came to my house, and we had about an hour-long conversation. And we both said what we felt about everything, and I could see that the new add-on, the new add-on, like I'm calling it the third house that's going out to the back, does block some of my view, and I pointed that out. But the garage was the problem. The garage blocked every view. And we talked back and forth. He said, "How about a one-car garage? And how about this? And how about that?" And it was a very respectful conversation. And he, I was, I said, "I'm still going to fight the garage." Well, he really listened to me and heard me, and he, he finally said, "Okay, I'm not going to do the garage." And he admitted that it would have towered over my garage and my fence and obstructed my view. I respect him very much for that. I think it's, he chose humanity over money, and I respect him for that. As for the plan, I think the add-on house is okay. I'm not very happy with the, the entire left-hand side being all pavement. That goes all along my patio. I'll be listening to cars sitting by my head revving. I understand the cars has to be parked, but they were originally, all along, the cars had been parked about halfway down the yard. There were always six cars there before, and you could fit two at a time. And I can see why he might not want to do that because he could make the front of the houses prettier. But I really wish we could figure out something in that one little area so that the parking doesn't have to go all the way to the back so that everything abutting my side is now a parking lot, even though I do have a fence there, and I can still see the view of the trees. So, I don't know if we can figure out something that would make us both happy, but overall, I think he's worked very hard and has a good plan and has tried very hard, so.
Thank you, Ms. Levis Coulson. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Melin. I'm on 14 Marlborough Street, and I am very happy to see the revision to the, revision one and two to the plans. I agree with Linda that I think this is a perfect opportunity for the developer to do something very, very good with landscaping. I think if we saw or heard or had some kind of a plan to maybe not make that asphalt driveway 100 percent asphalt, but maybe have some timbers or some granite on the side, maybe to negate a little bit of the noise that Linda is talking about with cars coming in and out, I think it might be very beneficial. I would be very curious. I'm very happy to see that the clapboards will be the same as what they are. But I do think this is a perfect opportunity to make everybody in the neighborhood feel that the project is really 100 percent and it's amenable to everybody by considering landscaping and trying to mitigate that noise with the parking.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in support?
Pat Henault, 7 Marlborough Street. I too appreciate that the garage is gone. I just have a question, though, as far as runoff. If there, it's going to be paved, what's going to keep all of the heavy rains and such from going into the neighbors' yards?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak in support? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, Newburyport, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. I'm not really in opposition on this, but I felt I should come up in this portion. I have a couple of concerns. The main one is the historic chimney that is the most evident historic feature that everybody can identify with. And I have heard comments that it will be saved, I believe. But my concern is that the historic chimney, which is so important, be preserved, and that, that in your write-up, that that's one of the conditions that the developer has agreed to. So often, what has happened now is developers are tearing out our historic chimneys, and then they're putting in these fake ones. And then they start to leak. And then, in a few years, they'll be gone. So, if we can save that and document that that historic chimney will remain, I would very much appreciate that. Overall, I personally feel that the project is still too large, but that is apparently not going to be objected to by the neighbors at this point. They have to live with it. I don't. One other thing that I did bring up ahead of time with the architect of the project, and we discussed it, is the, whether it met the threshold of the 25 percent. When I look at it as a layman and no architect, it looks to me as though, when you look at all those surfaces projecting in and out, especially in that back section, it looks to me to me as though it's more than 25%. Now, Scott showed me before the meeting a different perspective. He had a different plan that I had not seen before, which he's going to send me. And it appears to be within that 25%. But I just, I just wanted to raise that point. To a layman, it looks like it's, it should have gone DCOD in this case, but apparently not. But I just wanted to raise that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Calderjohn. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands, we'll move to questions from the board.
I would just, it'd be great to hear from the applicant about the chimney, for one, and about whatever the surface will be in the driveway and runoff.
You gentlemen need another microphone? We can, we've got access.
We know what we're doing.
I could answer the majority of the questions that have been brought up. As far as the parking and the pavement, we went through a number of options. We went through a number of options. One of them actually included an additional curb cut on the right side of the building, which would be two additional parking spaces, which means it would get rid of the two in the back, decrease the amount of asphalt, but we just felt like it was, it was pushing, it, a second curb cut, we felt, was a lot to ask for. And also, we would be destroying that portico that is in the front, and that's one of the prominent features that we wanted to maintain. As far as the pavement and the parking, in order to be able to back out of these two spaces, these two spaces need to have sort of a horseshoe turnaround, so they can make essentially a three-point turn and exit without backing up the majority of the way. As long as, as well as these four spaces that are on the left side of the property, they're essentially parallel parking spaces, about nine by 18, which is the minimum size for a parking space. So we've designed for the minimums, tried to keep the asphalt down as much as possible, but still leave enough space for these people to back out, turn around, and get out safely without essentially backing down about, you know, 80 feet of driveway. As far as the DCOD and the 25%, the only, the only... Thank you, that was going to hit me, appreciate that. The only wall that we're actually demolishing is this wall right here.
Can you, can you point that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going the opposite way. The only walls that we're demolishing are this, is this back wall, and that's to allow for this addition to happen. So that actually doesn't count as part of the 25% in the bylaws, so we're actually closer to, I think, about 5% or 6% in total. The rest of the, the other walls are remaining existing. The only thing that we're doing is replacing windows and putting in new windows. So as far as the 25%, this portion is essentially negated by the bylaws, but is the only portion of the entire, essentially, property that we're demolishing. The chimney is going to remain intact. We have no intentions of removing that. We've actually tried our best to work around it and plan and stay away from it as much as possible. And I'm trying to see what else here.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. So what we could do, and we, you know, we haven't really, we haven't discussed this internally yet, but with Hancock, with Blake, is to work through usually is onsite Caltech system. It's essentially a drywell. Takes all this runoff or runoff and put it onsite, if possible. But that's something I think we'll need to talk a little bit more about.
Any other questions? Yes.
I have a question about the windows. Could you talk about why some of the windows on the building are six over six and others are six over one?
So the existing windows on the house right now are six over six, so we're looking to maintain the existing box of the house as six over six, and then only do the addition in six over one.
Will the owner agree for conditions related to the chimney and the representation of the walls remaining in place as a condition to the application?
No, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, that the...
About the walls, I mean.
As a condition to the approval, if the board should have voted to approve, would the homeowner be amenable to a condition on the approval, that they will take such steps as necessary to preserve the chimney? And that they, I guess, my concern is, there was a prior application that came through that was about the 25% DOD, and there was no specification in our decision about the preservation of the existing walls. I just, that's what I'm looking to sort of ascertain, if the homeowner be willing to at least agree that, of the existing house, that those four walls are going to remain, there's going to be no demolition of those walls.
Yeah, I don't think we can submit to a condition like that. Actually, don't really want to submit to either of those conditions. We're building the property and retaining the chimney, which, you know, is what we designed and what we believe looks good. With respect to the wall analysis that was submitted to the zoning administrator, we came in under the DCOD threshold. You know, it's for the next owner to deal with whatever that is in the future. We don't want to attach a condition to the property that runs with the land in perpetuity. No.
Well, not so much to the, just a condition to the decision that the, I guess, the applicant will take such steps as necessary to preserve the four, the existing walls of the, of the, of the main home, I guess.
Well, we are doing that.
I'm sorry?
We are doing that.
And I'm just as a condition to the decision?
Yeah, it's part of, part of the, part of the project.
Right.
I thought you were...
No, it's part of the decision.
I thought you were trying to impose a condition, which says you cannot touch other walls in the future.
Oh, no, 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 not on the deed. No, no, not, not on the deed. No, 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 I'm sorry. On the applicant, on the, on the approval of this application.
So what would the condition?
And I might need some help from some others, but some formulating it, but along the lines of that, the, basically based on the representations being made, that the applicant's going to take such steps as to preserve the existing walls of the structure during construction. And the only demolition that's going to occur is in that back section. I'm, you know, trying to formulate how you would put that as a condition.
Let me ask, is the concern that the applicant...
If we, if we went over the 25% by virtue of messing up during construction, we'd be in for a DCOD permit.
Yeah. But is that basically the concern?
That's my concern.
That during this construction and through the, sort of, the tenure of this project?
That the whole thing doesn't get, because it's a historic, I mean, the, the front part is a historic home. The additions obviously are not. So it's, you know, just trying to see what we can do to make sure that we're not losing the, if the, the main part, the main part, the main home with the structure.
I think what protects us, and this is just for all of us to discuss and maybe, you know, agree or not agree or have thoughts on, but I think what protects us, and by us, I mean, the, sort of, the public and the code, is the DCOD itself, because it comes in under the threshold because only one wall's being impacted.
Correct.
That calculus changes should other walls be touched, for whatever reason, which would trigger further review, and in fact, they would have to come back before us.
If...
And in that instance, what would be a major modification, which would require new notice to the public and, and, and a, you know, a public hearing on that modification, because its, its impact is now, you know, in this entirely different paradigm, where before it was under DCOD, not tripped into the DCOD. With the change to the other walls, we would then be in that realm.
We're bound by the plans that we filed. So, you know, the, the plans show only the removal of that small percentage of wall.
Yeah.
So if we were to go outside of that, we would basically have gone outside the scope of our decision.
If, that said, we can put a condition in that simply says, or reiterates, you know, what might elsewhere be cobbled together in other parts of the, of the application that simply says, "In the event that," and you can, you know, let someone craft that.
Come in.
In the event that any, any of the other walls, you know, are impacted and/or demolished, that the applicant will be required to come back before the zoning board of appeals in, in a major modification, a major modification petition, something like that?
Something like that.
Okay.
And as, with regard to the preservation of the chimney, would they be amenable to at least have something referenced in the...
No, we don't want to do that. No, thank you.
Take such steps as necessary to preserve the chimney as a condition?
That's, again, that's part of the application. I don't want to be redundant and put, put conditions on that bind, you know, this permit forever. So if somebody needs to come in and modify it, that's, that's up to them.
Again, yeah, it's just for the purposes of the application, not a restriction on the home or the deed.
Well, it would be. It would be a permit that runs with the land with a condition on it, so.
But if, and let me jump in just a little...
Basically, you're, you're asking for an affirmative obligation to preserve a chimney in perpetuity in order to keep that permit.
But is it, is it the intent of the applicant to preserve that chimney? I think it was represented that it was, that everyone worked around...
The existing chimney is on, on, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 it's all right. I just, and thank you. I, is it, it's, it sounds as though everyone here feels that it, what was represented is that that chimney was, is core and central to, and those are my words, of course, central to this, this preservation effort. And in fact, I believe it was, it was specifically represented that efforts were made to work around it.
Correct.
You know, in building walls and facing rooms.
Yep. And it's on the plan, like you said.
So, you know, if I might dovetail on Ms. Palmeroy's question, so what would be, what would be the reticence to...
Is this to preserve the chimney during construction?
Yes.
Or is it to preserve the chimney forever?
Well, so, my sense is that...
Of course, we're going, we're going to try to knock, not knock things down during construction.
Nothing, nothing we could ever do, if we were being realistic and sort of authentic to ourselves, would ever be forever, right? So subsequent owners may have different sense and sensibility. They may come back before this or other boards with other ideas. That would have its basis of review. I think what this board, at least me as one, as one member, and I think what I'm hearing is some, you know, some buy-in from the other members that, at least Ms. Palmeroy, that the concern is that, that the representations being made by the applicant are, are, that the applicant will be acquitting himself to the best of his ability to do all of the things represented as part of this application, so that we feel comforted as a board and the community would feel, the public would feel comforted as, as a butters, that this chimney, that the efforts that are represented to be taken, the design around that, that that would be something that would...
Yeah, I mean, if it means during, during construction, then, I mean, that's already part of the plan.
Right.
So it's just duplicative of what we've submitted. But if it means that someone has to take affirmative action in order to maintain and preserve a chimney in perpetuity, no, we don't agree to that condition.
That's not what I was asking. I'm asking, as part of the construction, that all, all actions be taken and now to preserve the chimney during construction.
Now that I understand the condition...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think any of us would aspire to try to, you know, to try to saddle this or any property with these conditions that run forever. But I appreciate, you know, sort of, the, the time to explain that to us so that we know what's happening. Any other questions?
Circle back to the runoff, and I'm just trying to remember from the lot, is the parking area now, is it asphalt? Is it some part asphalt, some gravel? Is it?
It's all gravel.
It's all gravel, okay. So that's a lot of asphalt to be put in, and just, I just want to get a little more explanation on how that might be addressed. There'd be a lot of water running off that and, and some rainstorms that hasn't been running off. So what, what specific mitigation might you suggest that could be worked in?
I believe it was a drywell before, but yeah.
Well, we'll deal with it, because it can be dealt with. I totally agree, and it can be dealt with, but I just didn't want to leave it at that.
I mean, we haven't really, we haven't really explored that option, I think, as much as we should have. I think what we've been concerned about is, is getting through this process and getting it approved as a three-family. We're definitely, look at a few different options, as I mentioned, some things that are typically done for, for... Oversized, or areas that need to have additional percolation or drywells, but I don't think we've spent enough analysis at the moment to really, to say with confidence that we're going in that direction. I think it's something that we need to explore, and we'll make sure we, we sit down with Hancock Associates and make sure the runoff is dealt with appropriately. But at this time, I don't think I can say confidently that we've, we've selected a specific direction. That is presuming that there, there really is an increase in runoff. I mean, it's a three-family home, it's remaining a three-family home. Had the current owner wanted to pave that area, he could do so without any oversight whatsoever, without any drywall, without any drainage system. So we did remove all of the, you know, covered parking, which perhaps could have mitigated that, but we do need turnaround space, and people need to park. And so, you know, it was a trade-off, essentially. We really don't believe that there's going to be any significant runoff based on the additional asphalt that's, you know, been placed on the property.
We're also adding nearly 600 square feet of new coverage on the lot that will be covered by roof, so that's going to be additional runoff, not to, to continue down this unfortunate path. But there is additional runoff from the extension of the building as well.
Yeah, I suppose you could make that case. It's, I guess, going to run off the roof to this side, and perhaps to this side. I, it's the idea that that could provide a significant amount of stormwater that would spill down to the street, but, yeah, there's, there is additional coverage of roof.
Attorney Griffin, if, is it fair to conclude that, that the applicant is choosing sort of a, an impervious cover, whatever that might be, asphalt is what's slated, but not necessarily open to impervious, whether it's gravel or some other cover? Is that...
The proposal is for asphalt.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yes?
Have you looked into or discussed the possibility of grading the asphalt in such a way that the runoff would at least go away from, I guess, a butters? You know, whether it be towards the home or towards a, if there is any type of drywell, or in such a way that it's going towards the street?
So these are all new questions? These are not things that came up at the first meeting? At the first meeting, the concerns were covered garage space, massing, and, you know, specific to one a butter, removing the detached garage, which was proposed in the amended plan. There was no discussion of stormwater management. There was, you know, no discussion of paving the driveway. So we really haven't explored those issues. We thought we had gone to the neighbors and that we had basically addressed their concerns. Many of them spoke in favor tonight. So I think that, you know, some concerns are reasonable, and some probably don't need to be addressed. And, you know, I think we've addressed the reasonable concerns of the neighborhood at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? Deliberations?
I'll start.
Please.
I was not at the November 14 hearing, and obviously, this is a new plan that's been presented this evening that omits a garage and increases the impervious pavement with regard to, there's more asphalt. It's just what it is. With that, with, and with the structure, that does create and can create, you know, issues when it comes to runoff. So, I mean, I think that's a question I still have about this. Otherwise, the project as designed, I think it's, it looks, it looks good, is of a decent size. I think that there can be other issues. I mean, I think the removal of the garage was, I think, a big improvement to the thing overall. But I still have questions, I have more questions about how you're going to deal with the runoff with the increase in the asphalt.
Okay.
Yeah, I would add similarly, I, you know, just because this last iteration just came about earlier today, you know, I don't want to drag this out, but I think, you know, there was a lot of focus on the size and the massing originally, and those are butter concerns, and I think maybe we just didn't get to stormwater. If it hadn't been mentioned, maybe we never would have. That's why we have these hearings. So I think a little, little more, you know, something that guarantees that that's not going to be an issue. You know, the, the woman from Two Lincoln Street, just looking at Google Maps, there were cars that day when they did the satellite that parked next to you, you know, pretty close to the other side of that fence line. So I, I don't have a problem with that many cars being parked there. I think that, I think that's a good compromise, taking the garage structure down and eliminating that. And again, so with a bit of concern about the driveway, otherwise, I'd be good to go to approve it.
Yeah, I would, not to keep echoing, but I am, I have to say, not going to echo. Listening to the butters making the changes, they were significant. I think, I think the, the project much more fits the area, but, but it is a significant runoff issue that has to, I think, be addressed more than, gee, it wasn't mentioned last meeting, and we'll take care of it. I think it's a legitimate concern that just can't be discounted and left to chance, so I'm kind of leaning that way as well. Otherwise, I've been thrilled with the cooperation and the, and the size and the scale changes have been, you know, spot on in my mind.
Okay. Mr. Delisle?
Yeah, I would just echo the, the...
Yeah, I would just echo the, the comments of my colleagues. I think that, you know, certainly with regard to the size and massing, things have moved in, in a direction that the, the, the neighborhood is, is happy with and that's, and that's wonderful. And that's moving a long way towards, towards getting this accomplished. And I think that as it, as it relates to the zoning ordinance, you know, we, we have no indication that there's a, a further intensification or addition of a new non-conformity. So, so that's good. And I think the, the final hurdle is just to nail down this, this runoff issue and then we can, we can go from there.
I would agree with all of my colleagues, really said many of the same comments I was going to make. I'd just offer some kudos to the applicant for sharpening a pencil on this proposal and coming in with a variation that is very much more appealing. The massing is much more in keeping with the neighborhood and the butters obviously have supported it. So I'm in support of it in addition to the comments about the runoff, the increased asphalt.
So I, I'm inclined to, to agree with, I think, what's mostly the sentiment of the board. And great credit goes to the applicant for taking the effort. And this is something in a special permit. It's not required, though it's highly advisable that members of the public be polled and especially a butters, though it is not anything incumbent upon any applicant to go out and attempt to appease, nor could it be possible to appease every, you know, conceivable stakeholder. But in this instance, this applicant did, I think, in my opinion, and I think we are in agreement on this, they did a great job in trying to figure out what the concerns were and trying to address them, making significant changes to the plan and even removing the garage. And I'll say this just for, I don't know, for discussion among us before we move to a vote, if that's what we're going to do. As I look at the plan, it looks like, and it looks like the proposed asphalt is still surrounded by pervious cover. So it looks like it's, there's a border, if I'm reading the plan right. Is that, is that correct? There's basically soft scape? So, so around all of the asphalt in like an imagined giant capital U or horseshoe, there is what appears to be a whole lot of soft cover. So I don't know that it carries the day with anyone or even myself, but it, it is nice that there's this notion that runoff could be managed onto the perimeters, the perimeter of this parcel. But what, what's the sentiment of the board? How, how do you, for those that mentioned that runoff is an issue, there's one of two ways to proceed. Do, are we inclined to move forward with some condition or rather are, is the board asking the applicant to revisit this one additional point to the extent they're willing to, to do so?
Mr. Chairman, could I...
Yes, sir.
After speaking with the applicant, it's certainly not our intention to, to make any water situation worse for anybody else, but after speaking with the applicant, we're willing to go to some kind of impervious asphalt or in kind to, in order to decrease the amount of, or I'm sorry, in order to increase the amount of percolation that would be able to go through the asphalt. So if that is what the...
So pervious?
I'm sorry, yes, pervious.
I figured you meant that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So in light of that, it sounds like the applicant's willing to concede that additional design element. And Attorney Griffin could, is that something that you'd be inclined to have be part of?
That would be a condition, of course, we would...
Okay.
But we haven't chosen the surface yet, but we would have a condition, say, of pervious surface.
That, those are design, you know, design style choices that are certainly your option to choose. If we simply want to be binary about pervious, non-pervious and we, and we, we scope that it is pervious, I think, I, just as one voting member, I'm certainly, I'm happy about that, that...
As a condition?
That, yeah, that, that, that makes me happy. So I think that gets it done for me on, on stormwater. But how does everyone else feel? Does that...
Is it still with the condition that during construction, all steps will be taken for the preservation of the chimney?
Yes.
As the other condition, then I'd, I'd be in support of it.
Okay. Are we, yes?
So how would, how would the condition around the driveway, how would that be structured? Like, how, how do we know that that...
Applicant will agree to do pervious as part of the...
Yeah, it would...
And that's it? And then the building inspector just, just verifies that?
When we make it part of the decision and it gets recorded and, and that's a, you know, a condition of the permit, the planning office in coordination with our building inspector, when it came time for a CO and final inspections, that would have to be something that was part of the project. And if it wasn't, the recourse is that the building inspector could withhold a, a certificate of occupancy until it was, until it conformed to what the recorded permit provided. Okay. Are we ready to have someone craft a motion with the conditions?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities, application number 2019-061, 19 Marlborough Street. Motion to approve with the condition, number one, that all steps will be taken, all steps necessary will be taken during construction to preserve the chimney. Two, applicant will install a pervious asphalt driveway or some other such material in kind.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Pomeroy?
Yeah, motion been made by me, seconded by Mr. Cameron to approve, application number 2019-061, special permit for non-conformities, 419 Marlborough Street, with the two conditions as stated. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Ms. Pomeroy, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, the motion carries. The application's approved. Thank you very much for your patience. And those of you members in the audience that had come out to speak your mind, thank you for taking the time this evening. Okay, moving on to the next application in the agenda. There are two matters that we have been, that have been requested to be continued. The matter of 10 Railroad Street, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talamann and Costa, continued to 128... We have to take a, can we take a vote on, on that continuance? It's already on the agenda.
Definitely.
Yeah. Okay. We have a letter from Attorney Mead requesting the continuance of 10 Railroad Avenue. We just need a motion to continue to 12820 as requested.
Make a motion to continue 2020-002, oh, excuse me, 2020-001 till January 28th. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Seconded by Mr. Moore to continue the application number 2020-01, special permit for 10 Railroad Street to the meeting of January 28th, 2020. Still having a hard time with that one. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Ms. Pomeroy, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Okay. Five in the affirmative, the motion carries, matters continued to 12820. The next matter on the agenda is an application for special permit for non-conformities, 7 Dove Street. We have a letter from Attorney Lisa Mead of Mead, Talamann and Costa requesting a continuance to that same meeting date of 12820. Do we have a motion?
Motion to continue 2020-002 until January 28th. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cameron, seconded was that by Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
To continue, application number 2020-02, special permit non-conformity for 7 Dove Street to the meeting of January 28th, 2020. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Ms. Pomeroy, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries, matters continue to the meeting of 12820. The next application is a new application, so we'll be reading the legal notice into the record and then we'll hear from the applicant. The matter is, let's see, Ford Dorothy Lucy Drive. The Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on an application for dimensional variance filed by Ben Serrota, care of Lauren Rathbone, Precision Pool for the property owned by Ben and Megan Serrota, located at Ford Dorothy Lucy Drive in the R2 zoning district, indicated as assessor's map and parcel 72-12A20. The hearing will be held at City Hall at 60 Pleasant Street, Newburyport, on January 14th, 2020 at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested parties will be heard. The request is made under Newburyport Zoning Ordinance Section 6F yard requirements. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals, permits, special permits and/or variances on the following request: to construct a swimming pool in the rear of the house within an area defined as the front yard setback. May we hear from the applicant?
May we see it?
Oh, please. And if you could use that microphone as well.
Thanks. I'm Matt Canning. I'm the president of Precision Pool. Lauren Rathbone was actually not able to make it today. This is Ben Serrota, the homeowner. As of now, the way that the house was put into the property, the backside of the house is considered the front side of the house, which is parallel to Mosley Ave. The front side of the house, which has the driveway, the driveway connects directly to Dorothy Lucy. It's the only access point to the house, which they use as their front access. We propose to put the pool in what is quote unquote "the front yard," even though it is used as the backyard. The pool will fall in all of the requirements and setbacks and whatnot we have that, we have, I think you guys have all the documents for. Front and side setbacks, depth, everything like that. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you have access to Google Maps on the computers of what you have, but if you see the, the image that Google Maps shows, clearly looks like our backyard, which is technically, I guess, surprisingly enough to us, is our front yard. So if you can access that, I think it would, it would be beneficial.
Anything else?
Nope. We did it based off of code, either VIF or 6F, the yard requirement setbacks. The board of, the building department actually accepted the proposed permit and then the planning department actually denied it. So be due to it being considered the front yard and not the backyard.
Just to be clear, that's, so you had begun construction, isn't, is the pool dug? Isn't...
Yeah, we haven't touched the yard yet.
Oh, okay.
Legally, I'm pretty sure you can dig a hole without a permit, as you could just pick up a shovel, but we don't touch the yard until we get the approval from the city.
Good call.
I'm not there until we get a permit.
Better.
Okay. Was there anything...
Yeah, I was just saying, just based off of the documents that we gave to you guys, if you see on the backside of the yard, that's Mosley Ave. They use that in one of these codes here. If, if you look at the Newburyport code, I'm not sure if you guys have this document or not, i- if you have a street on each side of you, then it's considered a double front yard, which, and then you don't actually consider, you don't have a backyard, you only have a side yard, which, you know, even though it's in the rear of your house, it's still considered a side yard. So we're trying to put it in the quote unquote "front yard" of the house. That is all.
Okay. Excellent. We may, we may have questions for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the applicant's presented their application. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the application? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands. Questions from the board?
I have a question, just, you, you said that there's, there are streets on two sides of the house? I thought it was an interior lot.
It is, yeah. So, so the property is 20A. Property 19, they actually share a driveway together. So Mosley Ave comes down and then you take a right onto Dorothy and then their driveway's right there.
Right, there's an easement behind. They access it, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's a little, the lots are, because it's the same lot technically, but there's two houses right on that lot and they share the same driveway, but the driveway only connects to Dorothy Lucy, not actually Mosley Ave.
Right, right. So the street, the only street that the property has frontage on is Mosley Ave. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I wasn't sure, your description, you sounded like it was on a corner.
I can understand. Right, yeah.
And I had a follow-up question too. This, this plan where it's a surveyed plan and you kind of penciled in the pool drawing, it shows X marks where the fence is. It looks like it's right on the property line and yet the, the photos here show, you know, an offset with the fence kind of back from the road. So would the fence be staying in the same location or are you going to push it out to the edge of the...
I think I'm going to lean on Matt, Matt on this, but I believe the fence line is remaining the same against Mosley, but extending six feet, one panel length out towards New Street, the neighbor on, on a new street, if that makes sense to you? Is that right?
Yeah, the fence is actually currently up right now and it won't be touched. Yeah.
Okay.
So this pool go, this pool will live inside of what's now the fenced in area?
Correct. And, and the fence is right on the property line and we did our measurements based off the property line, not the existing fence, but as we did our measurements, we found that the fence was very close to the property line, yeah, within inches.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? You know, it's interesting, at first glance, there's another pool going in just on the other side of Mosley, right across from Erie. That's definitely not this one, obviously, but though you would imagine that they would be undergoing the same situation.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, our house is kind of in a unique situation.
Because you've got the two front yards.
Right.
Right. It's where, it's where the house, sorry to cut you off, but it's where the house was actually constructed on the lot itself. Being the other house is actually 5 Gov. Street. We're actually doing that pool ourselves. It's enough houses in on the street that it's only considered to have a front and back and the front is actually on Gov., not Mosley Ave.
Yeah. I, I'm familiar with this house. I drive by this every, a couple of times every day.
You see a construction fence falling down.
It's, it's a unique situation. Okay, any other questions? Deliberations?
So I think the uniqueness of the situation goes to our, our zoning ordinance here and what's required for a variance. I think we need for variance, we have to have a showing of a, of a hardship. And I think that, you know, the, the situation that you've described, having the backyard and the front yard and being that, having that frontage on Mosley Avenue, which you don't use, that seems to be, you know, would rise to the level of a hardship under, under the analysis that we need for, for the variance. And I think that it's just your, the way you come into the, the property is that you come in on Dorothy Lucy and then you, you turn into the driveway.
Yeah, the shared driveway, the easement, your property.
And that's the only way in.
Correct.
And the, the, the house faces that way. It's, everything is oriented in the house towards that, that shared driveway and the front yard is really in, for all intents and purposes, it's the backyard.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that, that's why we were, you know, we probably wouldn't have known this if we weren't trying to get a pool. I mean, we always used the front yard as the backyard, if that makes sense to you. I mean, you know, there's a rear deck, there's a fence around it, it's, you know, but yes.
And that was the way everything was when you bought the house?
Correct.
Yeah.
And continuing on the hardship run, it looks like, I mean, I would consider a, a pool of this size and, and the only really big square area you have on a unique piece of lot, a reasonable use of the land. So I think it, it meets the criteria of that, of that type of hardship in, in looking at granting any kind of variance.
Any other deliberations? Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think certainly being familiar with this, as many in the city are, many in the board are, this is a very unique and almost peculiar species of, of sort of subdivision planning and that home, because your home has to share that common driveway access. There are no other places to place a pool. I think the hardship argument that's being offered by the board is, is a sound one, which is that this is not self-inflicted. You stumbled upon this, you would not have known, and it is peculiar, it's peculiar and unique that any home would have two front yards and thereby two front yard setback requirements that place additional restriction on your lot for placement of a pool than any other, you know, lot that isn't, isn't impacted by that. And I think certainly from my standpoint, it meets that, that hardship standard as well.
One last, we did, based off of our setback requirements, we actually did the setback requirements for a front and backyard just to be, just to play it safe.
Okay.
For that, for that specific.
Great.
Yeah.
If there are no other deliberations, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the dimensional variance, application number 2020-03, for Dorothy Lane for the installation of a pool, I should say for Dorothy Lucy Drive, sorry.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Cameron to approve, application number 2020-020. to approve, application number 2020-03 for dimensional variance for for Dorothy Lucy Drive. Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Five and the affirmative. The motion carries. Good luck to you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next matter in the public hearings. The notice of public hearing, the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals. Oh, sorry, this is the application by Frederick Habib on 575th Street, a dimensional variance, to construct a new single-family home on a non-conforming lot requiring variances for front lot area, frontage, lot width, side yard, and floor area ratio, AKA FAR. Notice of public hearing, the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on an application for dimensional variance filed by Frederick Habib for the property owned by Roland M. Deloche Jr. located at 575th Street, Newburyport in the R3 Piad Plum Island Overlay District, as indicated in the assessor's map and parcel 77-121. The hearing will be held at City Hall, at City Hall 60 Pleasant Street, Newburyport, Mass. on January 14, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., at which time all interested parties will be heard. The request is made under Newburyport Zoning Ordinance, Section 6A Dimensional Controls and Section 21 Piad. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals, permits, special permits, and/or variances on the following request: to construct a new single-family home on a non-conforming lot requiring variances for lot area, frontage, lot width, side yard, and floor area ratio. May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you.
Do you need to hold this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Attorney Paul Magliocchetti with offices at 7B Billy Boulevard in Haverhill, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening on behalf of the homeowner Roland Deloche and the prospective homeowner and applicant Fred Habib. Before I begin, in preparing for this evening's meeting, I did notice an error in the memorandum that I prepared. There was a miscommunication between myself and the engineer that filed, so I just wanted to clarify for the board to make sure that it was okay to proceed this evening. Within the memorandum, I reference to the Mr. Deloche as being the property owner personally since 1974. It was in his family since 1974. 1974, his father, George Sheridan, took ownership of the property, and then in the 80s, he deeded it to his son Roland Deloche. So any reference to Mr. Deloche is to his family. And also, in a couple of the paragraphs, it references that the only deficiencies were frontage and area. We came before you back in 2016 with a much smaller building, and those were the only deficiencies. This was a draft document that I had submitted to the engineer for review prior to his filing the application, and somehow he ended up filing the draft instead of the final version. So I did prepare an amended memorandum for this evening for all of you with those corrections, just stating that the deficiencies are significantly more than the frontage and the area, and in clarifying that it's not Mr. Deloche personally, but his family that had ownership since 1974. So is it okay if I hand out the amended?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you.
Give a copy to Ms. Palmer for the record.
That's fine.
Sure.
Need one more.
Sure.
So Attorney Magliocchetti, just to be clear, what we've just been hearing is your amended memorandum in support of the variance. Are these handwritten notes? Are they, did you make notation in here so that we can?
No, I retyped. I retyped it.
Okay, so this is like a restatement of the?
It's a restatement of it with the corrections that I spoke about earlier.
Okay.
I just didn't want to mislead the board in any way.
All right.
You're welcome. So I think it's important here. There's a lot of history with this lot. Not only has it been in its family for over 40 years. This has been a process. We actually came before the board back in 2016. The application ended up being withdrawn. Subsequently, we went before Conservation, which was recommended by the zoning board at the time. The decision of Conservation was not favorable. There were some issues with how it was decided, so we ended up litigating the matter, and then the court ruled, and we went back to Conservation. Conservation decided that they did not want to proceed until the zoning board heard it again because they wanted to know where, if we were allowed to put something on there, where it would be located, then they would make their determinations on the impact on the environment based on that. And we followed through on their recommendation, and that's why we're here this evening. So as I stated, Mr. Deloche's family has owned this property since 1974. At the time he took ownership, it was in fact a buildable lot by the city of Newburyport. And in the packet that you have in front of you, there is a letter from the Commissioner of Zones or the Building Inspector from 1974 stating that it is in fact a buildable lot. For whatever reason, Mr. Sheridan, who owned it at the time, did not build on the lot. In the 1980s, he deeded the property over to his son, Mr. Deloche. Mr. Deloche considered building on the lot, but in that area of Plum Island, there have always been issues with sewage and water. So he was waiting for basically the city to come up with a plan to bring sewage and water down to that end. In the 1990s, specifically in 1994, Mr. Deloche was prepared to develop the property for himself and his wife. However, there was still no water and sewer. He did have a meeting with the then-mayor, Lisa Mead, who prepared a letter in response to his request. And again, that letter is also in the packet. And in her letter, she also, she didn't say it wasn't buildable. She said there may be other options to Title V if he were to build on the lot. So she's leaving the option open. Mr. Deloche continued to monitor the water and sewer situation on the island. As many of you may recall, there were discussions for years about dealing with that situation. And he was following it, and that's why he waited to build. So throughout the years since 1994, he had meetings with the Building Inspector about building on the lot. In 2001, the city of Newburyport adopted the Plum Island Overlay District, the Piad, as we call it. And that presented further obstacles for Mr. Deloche to overcome. However, as a layman, he believed that he had that letter from 1974 and that his right to build would not be taken away from him. And even though he might have to go through some procedural hurdles, at the end of the day, he would be allowed to build on his lot. After waiting, he decided back in 2014 to try to do something. And in 2016, as I said earlier, we came before the Zoning Board of Appeals with a plan for basically as small a house as we could come up with for the property, seeking minimal variances. And it was clear from the board at the time that there was empathy for Mr. Deloche, but there was significant neighborhood opposition. And there were really a lot of concerns about the environmental issues. And it was the recommendation of the board that we should go to Conservation. And based on that, we were through the application at that time. Because of all the obstacles that he faced and after the decision of the board in 2016, Mr. Deloche was emotionally and financially depleted. He just didn't have it in him to keep fighting for this. So in 2017, he was introduced to Mr. Habib, who agreed to purchase the property subject to obtaining a building permit from the city of Newburyport. Mr. Habib began the process by applying with Conservation. And as I said, the result was not favorable. It ended up being resolved by the courts, and that's why we've reapplied. And as I said earlier, Conservation would like for this board to rule before they proceed on their end. We do carry a standing application with Conservation once we get a determination from this board. So now why we're here this evening. So we're here this evening to apply for relief from this board to allow Mr. Habib to build on this house. It is his intention to live on the property with his wife as they retire. They're both in their 60s. And we believe that we meet the requirements of the ordinance of the city of Newburyport as it applies to variances. The conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot. Structure or building and do not apply to the neighboring lands. Structures or buildings in the same district. The parcel currently exists as a vacant, undeveloped parcel of land and has been that way since Mrs. Deloche's family acquired it 46 years ago. At that time, the lot was considered buildable by the city of Newburyport, as exhibited by the letter. And again, in 1994, as he approached the mayor to try to build, she implied that there may be some other options to the water and sewer option. I'd like to remind everyone, if you were to take an aerial view, there are nine or 10 properties in this one little block that surround this property. Every single one of those lots is built upon. This is the only non-built lot in that block. It stands alone. It's the only standalone lot that has not does not have a house built on it. Strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot in a manner equivalent to the use permitted to be made by other owners of the neighborhood lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. The condition of the lot is unique to the applicant's property. The parcel was purchased as a separate lot, as designated in the title, and exists as an individual lot of record to city of Newburyport. The parcel is one of nine or 10 lots in Block B, and it's the third largest in said Block B. This lot in particular stands out among the other lots, not only in size but symmetry. It's almost a perfect rectangle. So it's not like it's a pork chop lot or a triangular, but it's very symmetrical. In the neighborhood, there are other properties that have been built on. Like I said, if you look at this lot and you do a 360, every other lot's built on. Strict application would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the property. This is a single-family home that we're proposing, a very modest size. He designed the building footprint to minimize the dimensional relief sought. And without relief from this board this evening, no reasonable use can be made of the property, which was originally purchased as a separate buildable parcel. The unique conditions are not the result of actions of the applicant subsequent to the adoption of this chapter. The parcel is part of a subdivision plan approved by the city of Newburyport in 1920. He purchased it in 1974 and received a letter from the Building Inspector stating it was a buildable lot. The Deloche family did not nothing to create the situation that they find themselves in today. The grant of a variance would not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the district. The applicant's willingness to build a small retirement home on the parcel for himself and his wife, this is the least that they could do on this lot. Without this, nothing can go on there. And it's essentially a taking. Furthermore, throughout the district where the property lies, there are other similar properties that have been built on or the homes have been altered or enlarged. Right down the street just a few years ago, there was a home that was significantly enlarged. Where by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or unusual shape of a specific site at the time of the effective date of this chapter or to which this is amended, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or other extraordinary or exceptional physical situations or conditions of such site of the property, the literal enforcement of the requirements of this chapter pertaining to yards or other space relationships or total land area would result in exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner of the property. As I said, the hardship in this case is clear. This is the only lot in that area that has not been built on. They were only asking for a very small, single-family home, which is as little as you can ask for. If you look around, there are homes, there are lots of similar size, different shapes, some smaller, that have all been built on. This is the only one that still stands alone. Mr. Deloche's family purchased this property in the 70s as a buildable lot. They always wanted to build a family home on there. They waited. They tried to be patient and wait for the water and sewer to get down there because they knew that there would be issues with Title V. And by the mere fact that they waited it out, they've lost the ability to build without relief from this board and Conservation. And that's why we're here before you this evening. We just want to get back what was bought in 1974, a buildable lot. Thank you very much, and I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Magliocchetti. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Anyone wish to speak in support? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? And if I can ask you to come up to the microphone?
I will.
I'll be great.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ellen Juánez. I live at 675th Street. I have an issue with what you had just said. I have an issue with what you had just said. There are no other, there are no other lots on that area that don't have a house on it. There are two other lots, one owned by my sister and one owned by my neighbor Ray Kingman, that are not, don't have, they're empty lots that don't have a dwelling on it. So his lot is not the only lot on that street.
And Jill's.
And my daughter Jill's.
There's three.
So there's three. And in your remarks, you had said that he had met with Lisa Mead. In the letter that we have, it says that she was writing in response to his letter. So I don't know what meeting that you are talking about that he had with Lisa Mead. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Again, my name is Ellen Moniz. I live at 675th Street. My family and I have been on this street for 72 years, first as summer residents and then becoming year-round residents. I have many concerns regarding this proposed new construction on the vacant lot at 575th Street. There has never been a dwelling on this property, nor was it grandfathered in. Therefore, by the zoning laws and PIOD guidelines, this request should fall under new construction requirements. New construction requires 12,000 square feet and a frontage of 120 linear feet. 575th Street covers 4,892 square feet and 65 linear feet, oh, 55 linear feet, making this lot 7,108 feet under requirement of a square footage for a lot, for new construction, and 65 linear feet under the requirement to build for the linear. Structures on the property specified by Mr. Magli-- how do you pronounce your name?
Maggie Ketti.
Thank you. Were all built between 1930 and 1950, before new zoning laws and PIOD guidelines were mandated. Since then, any subsequent renovations or construction to these structures have complied with current zoning laws, PIOD and PIOD guidelines. Unfortunately, for many people, what was considered a buildable lot in 1974, under today's regulations, is not. I remodeled my house, and I had to follow all the guidelines. I did not, I had to follow all the guidelines. And my lot is one of the smaller lots, so I had to continue the footprint that was there. If I didn't have a house on that lot, I never would have been able to build on it. And my lot is so small, it's probably one of the reasons why all these new guidelines have been put in. When the water and sewer system was implemented, this lot was determined to be unbuildable and therefore no tie-in was issued. A question I have is why, at that time, with Mr. Deloche's due diligence regarding this vacant lot, did he not address the water and sewer tie-in issue or that the lot was not grandfathered in? We have experienced many problems over the years with this fragile system. I am very concerned what adding additional stress to the system might do. And along with these problems, we are about one big storm away from being declared a state of emergency in that area, as mentioned by one of the speakers at last Friday's Plum Island Preservation Meeting. As a neighborhood community, we are very concerned and sensitive to what happens on Plum Island. In closing, it is my hope, when the committee votes, you will keep the integrity of the island your main concern and uphold the existing zoning laws and POID guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moniz. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Sir?
Good evening. My name is William Fallon. I live at 877th Street, directly abut the property. I second everything that Ellen had to say. Her thoughts, her ideas couldn't have been put forth any better. I'm a recent buyer of the property that I live in. When I purchased that property approximately 15 months ago, I was led to believe that that was an unbuildable lot. It did not meet any of the requirements, zoning requirements. It had no sewer hookups. The dune grass is supposed to remain for drainage in the area. Any house and parking on that area will reduce the beneficial drainage. I'd like to, that's basically my comments. I'd like to just make a comment on the process. I guess I don't understand why the Conservation Commission would not make a decision instead of having 15 variables to discuss, just having one variable, prior to the zoning board having to make a decision concerning all these areas.
Now, that's a good question, Mr. Fallon. It's just to answer it so that we can address it right away. It's not uncommon at all that one board or another, when multiple boards are required to give opinion and vote on a certain application, that a board by consensus may simply choose to defer or to hold back momentarily to await a consensus from another board.
You could defer back.
We could, yeah. We could volley back and forth indefinitely, but it's not uncommon, I'll be honest, it happens as frequently, ZBA to Conservation as it happens Conservation to ZBA, and also Historical Commission and sometimes Planning Board. So it's a, there's a fluidity to that, and there's no real rhyme or reason. And by that, there's no real right or wrong. So, not uncommon, and yes, your observations are not at all incorrect, though it's sort of the state of affairs, as it were.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Lee McLaughlin, 975th Street. A lot of what I have to say is repetitious to what my sister said. And also, I just want to say, this is maybe our, I've lost count, but this is maybe our third or fourth time at the hearing, and we've also been to the Conservation Committee maybe four times, and two times the clients were no-shows. Okay, let me get started. I'm grateful to have this opportunity to address the Newburyport Zoning Board regarding the notice of intent for new development on 575th Street. I've resided at 975th Street initially seasonally, and then as a full-time resident for a total of 68 years. My property directly abuts this proposed dwelling. The proposed construction on 575th Street is for a new dwelling and is non-compliant according to the Plum Island Overlay District. The POID requires any lot developed for a single family to use minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet. The dimensions of this lot are 4,894 square feet. The POID requires the frontage to be a minimum of 120 feet. The proposed dimensions are only 55.84 feet. The POID requires side A and side B setbacks to be a minimum of 20 feet. The proposed dimensions are 10.9 feet, and that's where I would abut his property. The POID requires the floor area ratio to be a maximum of 25%. The proposed dimensions are 38.25%. And the city's building department determined that this is not a grandfathered lot. This lot is currently designated in the AO flood zone. Development in the AO flood zone poses a safety, public safety risk, especially at this time, when we are painfully suffering from severe erosion. Leaving this land clear may well reduce the risk of flooding to the surrounding homes. I also have photos to submit showing the flooding and beach destruction on our street. Another concern is there is no water sewer tie-in for this lot. The system was designed based on the number of existing structures and 44 identified buildable lots. 575th Street was not included in the consent order. Defying this ordinance would compromise, excuse me, the already fragile water sewer system. And two years ago, during a harsh winter, the septic system catastrophically failed, and the residents of more than half of the island were forced to evacuate for three weeks. This has only been minimally corrected. It's more like a temporary fix, so it could happen again. And I would not object to anyone building or renovating property as long as they abide by the current zoning laws and do not cause detriment to our neighborhood. Zoning codes and building planning laws exist for the good of the community. Therefore, I respectfully request that you deny this application for construction. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
I also have documents I'd like to submit.
Certainly. If you could give them to the, to our, the board's secretary, Ms. Palmeroy. This way, once you hand them over, we, are these documents that you can?
These are letters from other letters, in addition to the neighbors', letters of neighbors who could not attend.
Do you have multiple copies, by any chance?
Yes, I have a packet for everyone.
Okay. Could you give one copy to Attorney Maggie Ketti as well as to us, just so that everyone has that? Please.
Well, I have six copies.
I'll defer my copy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, and also?
I'll be able to share from Ms. Palmeroy.
Just to give you an idea, this is the flooding that we have experienced, and that was when the beach was more built up.
Go ahead.
I've got to go.
Yeah. Let's take a quick look. Oh, then, I will.
We've got a bunch of letters.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Sir?
My name's Mark Consoli. I'm at number 375th Street, immediately adjacent to the subject property. I agree with the statements of my neighbors. I won't restate them. It would seem to me that this is exactly what the Overlay District was intended to deal with, and when I read the reg, it seems like it violates almost every provision of the Overlay District. And, you know, one thing that, you know, obviously my neighbors have pointed out that, I would also like to point out is, even in 2016, this property was a lot further from the ocean than it is today. It was probably 300 yards away from the ocean. It's probably 50 yards away from the ocean today. So, and I know that's one of the requirements of the Overlay District, that there be, you know, a certain setback from the water itself. So, to me, this violates every provision of the Overlay District, and it doesn't seem like it is buildable. Maybe it was in 1974, I understand that. But when the Overlay District was put in place, this is what it was intended to deal with. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
My name is Jeremy Shaw. Actually, I live at 475th Street, and I've owned the property now for about five years, although I've been coming to the island for years. And I also would like to, you know, I'm echoing the same sentiments that my neighbors have, although not as eloquently. Essentially, this proposal does not meet one of the zoning requirements, and that's why they're there. That's, you cannot put a square into a round peg, round hole. It just doesn't work. So, there's other issues. The road is very small in the summertime. It's literally a pathway to the beach for people. There's no parking on that street. You can't park on the street. You'd block the whole street. There's just other issues. Putting in a steel frame into the ground vibrates the ground. We have basements, and actually, that's why I bought my house, because I have a foundation in the ground. And there's issues with that that we experienced when the house at the end of the street was built, vibrating through the actual foundation and cracking things. So, there's more problems here than we just see on the surface. So, that's really all I wanted to say. So please, listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Ma'am?
Maureen Adams, 975th Street, and just everything that everybody else said. Jeremy brought up a good point about the foundation. We had cracking in our basement when two houses had steel pilings put in, which were further away than this house would be. This would be 10 feet away from us. So that's a big concern, since we have one of the older homes. And again, the laws were changed for a reason. And if your client had built in '74 or even '94, you know, we probably wouldn't be here. You know, it would have been perfectly acceptable. So, I just, I'm totally against this building. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Is it true that your client is a Realtor? Habeet, or his last name is Habeet?
He is a Realtor, yes. If he's building, that's from his office, that's why.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions, or I'm sorry, any other comments, whether in support or opposition or just comments in general? Seeing no hands. Questions from the board?
Can I just address a couple of the issues?
Oh, please.
Could you use the microphone, please? Use the microphone, please?
Thank you.
I'm just, wanted to address a couple of the issues. With regard to the comment about being the only lot, I'm going by the assessors' page, and I have a copy of it right here, which I can pass around and show it to the audience as well. And this lot is in yellow, and you can see that in this Block B, all of the other lots do in fact have properties. There may be, like, within those lots, there may be two or three parcels that compose them. But that's what the comment was. There was no intention to deceive or mislead anyone. That's what we were going by. Secondly, with regard to the grandfathering comment, that's well taken. For those of you that are aware of the grandfathering laws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there is a zoning change, like there was in 2001, that created the PIOD. If you have a lot that has 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet of area, you can quote-unquote "grandfather it" and establish a buildable lot without coming to this Board of Appeals. There's a minimum size house that you can apply. They're correct. The size of this house is 4,800, it's under 5,000 square feet. And all I can say about that, if there was a two-foot strip down the side, we would have been able to grandfather it. So really, this argument is about a two-foot strip along the side of the border. That's the reason why we're going through all this. Otherwise, it would be grandfathered. It's that small of a difference. With regard to not meeting the dimensional requirements of the PIOD, again, that's well taken. However, if you look around, not only at the homes around this lot, but in the neighboring blocks, you'll find that the majority do not comply. So, none of them could meet what the, what that PIOD established. And there is an issue with that because when the PIOD was established, well, there's an issue in the law called spot zoning, but it specifically affected only a couple of lots. And this happens to be one of the lots that it affected. So, but that is why you're here. You're here to deal with issues. We know that we don't comply. We admit that. We agree with that. We do not meet the criteria of the PIOD. However, you have a set of criteria under your ordinance, that if you meet these criteria, there's an exception to the rule. We meet all of the criteria, and that is what I talked about in my presentation, in my memo. And that's why I believe that the decision of the board should be to grant these variances and allow us to proceed to the Conservation Commission, which I think that's really where the issues may lie here, with regard to the dune grass and where this parcel lies, where this whole block lies on the island. But, so I just wanted to address those issues that were discussed and give my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions from the board? Yes, ma'am.
One of those three lots that I was talking about has water and sewer tie-in.
I can stand awhile.
Okay.
Sorry, I need.
Thank you. Any other, any questions from the board? So, while the board's sort of contemplating, Attorney Maggie Katty, I have a question. As the board endeavors to try to delve through this, right, and it's a very technical request, and I want to just point out, I think we're all aware, this had come before our board in 2016. I was actually on that board at the time, and it was, I believe, ultimately withdrawn on the applicant's request to pursue conservation, and I think that's where the procedural history that you shared at the outset kind of picks up. The, and then, of course, it went through a, sort of a legal wrangling that brought you back to Conservation and now here. So, this, the question that I have, and the question that I had then, and I have again today, is when we deal with, you know, grandfathering, this notion of grandfathering specifically, Chapter 48, Section 6, which I know you're familiar with as well, the issue is, how should, how does our board reconcile the fact that your client, the applicant, had not undertaken the opportunity to avail themselves of preserving this lot as a buildable lot within that five-year timeline following the implementation of the PIOD? Under 48, Section 6, there is, whenever there's a zoning change, if that zoning change, that zoning change sort of sets a time clock of five years to come forward. And the second piece of, and they hadn't, right? So, what we're left with, and this is what my question is, you know, how shall we reconcile that sort of legal discrepancy in applying, you know, 48 and applying the PIOD in the face of the fact that the applicant appeared to not have taken any, you know, overt steps to preserve that build, you know, that buildable status that's being claimed? And the second piece of my question is, with reference to the water and sewer, I think you had said that the Delode family, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Deloche.
Thank you, I'm sorry. The Deloche family, that they waited out the water and sewer, as is sort of described in the letter between Attorney Mead and the Deloches. They waited out water and sewers so that they didn't have to comply with Title V, and thereby essentially lost their ability to build. But isn't it true that they had the opportunity to perch, to pay into the assessment system and get a stub for water and sewer, but they elected not to do that? They let that water sewer line pass them by without a tee-off? But those are really, that's what I think this hearing tonight, for us, should be distilled down to, and it hinges really on those two things. You know, how do we reconcile the P.O.D. implementation? Nothing done, five years comes and goes. How do we reconcile the fact that, that there was an opportunity in the face of the water sewer provision out on Plum Island to stub out the provision of water and sewer, and that was, that wasn't undertaken?
Okay. First part of your question, with, the statute that you're referring to is not the same grandfathering statute I was referring to, but it's, it's similar in the way it functions. You're correct. Whenever there's a zoning change in a municipality, and your property's affected by it, you have five years to go under the old rules, basically. So, when, when this was changed, I don't know exactly what Mr. Deloche's circumstances, his financial circumstances were. This is not a wealthy man. He's a minister. He, he lives very reasonable means. That's part of the reason his father gave him this, this property. It was basically to be his retirement home, and that was a case that we made to you when we came in 2016. So, I don't know specifically. I do know for a fact, because he's stated to me repeatedly, and he's vented in my office, about he never stopped trying to build on there. There was an issue about getting the stub, and I don't know what it was. I think it was because, when was the, the water and sewer brought down there that they did the stubs? Do you remember the year? I don't want to...
2004, maybe?
I don't want to misrepresent.
We'll say four...
2007.
2007. So, that was outside, so that was outside that five-year window.
Yeah. The P.O.D. adopted 2001, and 2007 was...
Which is six years later. So, that was outside that five-year window. So, I guess that answers that part of the question, because he was still waiting for that. Because, like I said, the, the Title V in that dune area is very complicated. Even then, in the late 90s, early 2000s, it's very complex. And basically, he was told to wait it out, to wait until they bring sewer down there, because to do a Title V septic system, and I'm sure anyone that lives there knows, it's complex. Because you don't just, you don't have a lot of place to, to put, I guess they have the, they call them zero runoff systems. Right. That somehow circulate the, the waste. But he's not a sophisticated builder or anything. So, he doesn't really understand those sophisticated systems. Remember, you're talking to a layperson. You're talking to an average guy on the street that has this piece of land, he has this letter that says it's buildable. He doesn't believe that that can be taken away, no matter what the city or town does. He always has that to rely on. And he's just waiting for them to provide the services that make it financially feasible for him to build his retirement home on the property. I think that's the best way I can answer those questions for you.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm sure we're going to have additional questions. I might have a circled back question.
Okay.
If I, I'm sorry. It's okay. Let me just say, at this phase, we're going to, and I want to certainly, we're very flexible about the repartee and the comments, but we're going to allow the board members to ask questions, and we may ask questions of members of the audience that have spoken, so thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, any, any other questions from the, from the board? I have a, then I have a follow-on question. So, I, I understand what you're saying, so how then shall we reconcile the fact that, and you had said that the, that the Deloches never stopped trying to build on the, on the, on the lot, but isn't it true that they never, that indeed, an argument can be made that they never started trying to build on the lot? And by that, I mean specifically when the water and sewer came down the street, the opportunity to, to tee that off was presented. So, someone behaving in a manner that was, is never, to, to never stop trying to build on the lot, it would stand to reason that in '07, they would have taken that opportunity.
Because it was declared unbuildable at that time. He couldn't get the tie-in, because it was, it was after the P.O.D. had been adopted and after that five-year window had gone by. He couldn't get the tie-in. That's what started the fight that ended up with us coming here years later. He, he's been trying to do this since he acquired the property in the 80s, and like I said, he just, the, the septic system for him was not an option, because, like I said, he's a layman, and the cost just impaired his ability to do that. And there were talks, I mean, you probably recall, the City of Newbury Port talked for years about bringing water and sewer down there and addressing that issue. So, it was something he was monitoring and just waiting and waiting and waiting. And he's not savvy enough to understand the laws the way you and I or anybody else. He didn't know about the five-year window of opportunity, he didn't understand grandfathering. He was relying, like any other layman, on that letter from the city, saying it was a buildable lot, and he didn't believe that that could be taken away. That's, that's the honest truth, and that's what he keeps harping to me. He's like, how can they take this away from me? They're the one that told me this.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a, my concern when I first looked at this, and you hit on the questions that I had on the timing of the issue and the stub thing, was just looking at staff notes and, and hearing how many times it was declared an unbuildable lot. So, my question for, from my standpoint was, why would we be in a position to determine any kind of variance on a lot that's unbuildable? That doesn't, that seems incongruent to me, that it's a decision that would be before us. If it's unbuildable, why are we deciding on a theoretical lot that was buildable when it's not? So, I have a problem with that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, good, good question. It's, it's a bit of a catch-22, because our board has the power to grant relief to the denial of a building permit. So, we essentially have the power to declare a, a lot buildable by virtue of granting variance and other zoning and land use relief that would render non-conformities, a, to still remain non-conforming, but with a permission slip, so to speak. And so, you know, that's why we're here. So, so the, it's really more of an academic analysis for us, that it is unbuildable unless and until a, a board with competent jurisdiction, which would be us in this instance, grants relief to allow them to proceed in spite of the fact that it doesn't comply with zoning, which is what makes it unbuildable. In addition to which, there's, you know, there's the issue of DPS and a tee-off into municipal services. A pin in that for the moment, because Attorney Magliacotti, I've got a question for you about that in a moment, but I don't want to preempt.
No, no, that's, I just was trying to get discussion on that.
So, you know, my thoughts on this, with, with respect to the attorney and the owner who's trying to convey the property to a new possible owner, you know, I, this is confusing to laypeople, it's confusing to those of us who are on the board, who aren't not attorneys. So, in Plum Island has its own unique, you know, set of circumstances, and I think we've heard about many of those. You know, as I look at the statement of purpose from the Plum Island Overlay District, you know, which is about 15 lines, the purpose of the Plum Island Overlay District is to reduce damage to public and private property resulting from floodwaters, ensure public safety, eliminate costs associated with the response, I'm just going through the, the verbs here, avoid the loss of utility services, prevent the occurrence of public emergencies, limit the expansion, and here's, you know, the, the final thing that I think is applicable to this situation, limit the expansion of non-conforming, single and two-family structures so as to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems with density and intensity of use. You know, we've, in the year and a half, or almost two years I've been on this board, we've had a few additions on Plum Island, and those are contentious. This is, is, you know, new construction is a whole different ballgame. And as was stated, this is in the, you know, right now, and, and, you know, maybe it will abate in, in change and get better, or maybe it will get worse. This is, you know, ground zero for, for flooding and breaching Plum Island. It's, it's, you know, I don't know if it's 50, 50 feet or 50 yards or whatever was said earlier, but that, that location along reservation terraces really, is really not a place anybody should be investing more. I think we're trying to preserve, you know, what people have out there. So, you know, for all of those reasons, you know, if, if a lot of our, you know, officials are telling us it's unbuildable, and for all of those reasons, and the lot size, you know, I couldn't see myself granting it a variance. I just don't, don't think it meets those criteria.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah, I think, consistent with the comments of my colleagues, but taking it in a slightly more analytical direction, I mean, I think if we look at the zoning ordinance XH6C, as referenced in your letter, and we run through those points, that we are required, if we are going to grant a variance, we must find certain conditions to be present. I think that we are hard-pressed to do so. The first one, the conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot. They're only unique to this lot because the applicant sat on his rights for so long. In 1920, they weren't unique, in 1940, they weren't unique, and up through the, the P.O.D. and then the five-year runoff period. So, I don't think we can make that finding. I think that one, C1, we can't make that finding. In C3, again, we're talking about the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of the applicant's actions. I think that they're not. They're the results of the applicant's inaction. And as Mr. Champetti ran through, and you ran through the history of this, we have a lot of talk about doing things, but not a lot of doing of things. So, I think that we can't make that finding with regard to, to number three. And then, with regard to number four, if the relief that you're requesting is approved, it would not constitute a special privilege. I think that we can, we can't make that finding now, because it would constitute a special privilege, because there aren't any similar situations left here in this area, because everyone else had already done this. So, it would be a special privilege now, today, after the P.O.D., after the five-year runoff period. So, I think, from my point of view, I would be hard-pressed to find the grounds to grant a variance here.
Okay, I agree as well with Mr. Delisle's analysis of the issue of just not finding certain parts of the criteria that we are required to find for points of a variance, especially in particular the first two that he mentioned, conditions that are, and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot, and the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of the chapter. I agree with the, the statements of Mr. Delisle's already made. I just don't think the applicants met that criteria.
Yeah.
The additional point that came from, from notes also on the administrative consent order that was mentioned, and I tried to get the information, you may have seen earlier today, would like to have seen some verbiage on that, but if it was negotiated with the Department of Environmental Protection and states that new development must not be encouraged on Plum Island, this seems like, and I don't have it in front of me, so I don't, I don't, I can't say for certain, but it, on the surface, it appears that might run afoul of that directive as well, but that's another unknown right now.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree, and I think that while I believe this board, certainly I, and I'm sure this sentiment is shared by my colleagues, deeply empathizes with, with the situation the Deloche family is in. We have to run through this sort of strict lens that is sort of, you know, our charge here as a, as a ZBA. You know, we have to look at things in a very linear way, as you well know. When we look at the adoption of the P.O.D., you know, and the area in which it's, it overlays, this is a, this is a hypersensitive, I think we'd all agree, a hypersensitive, sensitive resource area. Plum Island is effectively a sandbar with houses on it, and is malleable and fluid and fragile, as, as fragile a resource as we can imagine within our zoning paradigm, so much so that the city council felt it was appropriate to create a special overlay district. And they did so in 2001, with the idea that there would be this, this period of stasis of development on Plum Island, and this is just my personal sentiment of it, but not paralysis, just simply a very careful, you know, acquittal of moving forward and development and intensification. And, and in my time on the board, which has been about, I can't even believe I'm saying it, 18 years on this board, and every day was amazing, but when we, it's been like, it's been like a party, to be honest. So, when, when I think about my time on this board, I don't remember, I don't remember an applicant, I don't remember many, in fact, I don't believe I remember any, applications in, in the P.O.D. where there is a proposal to build something, you know, as, as, you know, lawyers, God forbid, would say de novo, like from the ground up, brand new, not an adaptation of something that's there, an intensification or improvement of something that's there, but rather something that was never there, placed there. And I think that it is, in my mind, sort of the, the, the most dramatic example of intensification and impact on what is the most dramatic example of fragile resource area under our zoning. And I think, I think the sentiment, I think the historical behavior of this board has been to treat Plum Island and applications before us with very kit gloves, and very carefully do our best to acquit ourselves to, you know, to what our responsibilities are under the P.O.D. and under, under the statute. That said, we also live in the world, and we understand the, you know, the heartfelt impact that this has on, on any, anyone, because it could be any one of us. Nonetheless, we still have the stricture of a P.O.D., and it has a 12,000-square-foot lot area, of which this falls short by something of about 7,000. But you, and the applicant already knew that, we already knew that. It, it also requires 120 feet of frontage, of which this lot falls short by 65 feet. So, in addition to being in a fragile area, in an area where there had been nothing in the past, in an area where there had been nothing in the past, where there was no services provided in spite of the opportunity to, even though it was juxtapositioned from the five-year tail period, it was six years later, and I think you explained that, that still nonetheless, at no, you know, there, there was at least an opportunity which wasn't explored, it seems, that may be incorrect, to tee off somehow. And, and it sounds like you would disagree with me on that, and that's, that's fine. But what really moves me, and I think moves, what it sounds like is moving my colleagues, is that this is still a, a lot that does not conform. And the best an applicant can do through, you know, through you is to present an application to pitch us as to why we should make the exception to this rule, and the criteria of variance is the strictest under land use. So, the issue of hardship begs our question as to whether the hardship, at least in part, is self-inflicted, not by action, but maybe by omission. Unknowing and inadvertent, because laypeople don't know the law necessarily, why should they? But nonetheless, we are, we are nonetheless left with still the result of a decision to make on a lot that's vacant and whether to create impact, which I think counterbeings what I believe to be the spirit of the P.O.D. I wanted to say all that out loud, just so that you didn't feel as though, you know, this is just sort of, you know, decision-making in a vacuum. That said, that's just my sentiment. I know everyone here has sort of voiced something similar. Is there any further sort of deliberation that would, you know, that, that we want to, is there anything we want to ask of the applicant? I know there was a mention of, of DPS, and whether there was some information about whether, whether water and sewer could even still be teed off, but that seems like it's moot at this point, based on the...
Yeah, yeah.
So, Attorney Magliacotti, if you've heard, so you've kind of heard everyone's, you know, you've seen behind the curtain on what everyone's thinking. Do you, you still have the opportunity, if you wish, and we would entertain a motion to withdraw, or we can have a vote?
No, proceed with the vote.
Okay. I figured as much. Okay. So, that said, are there any further deliberations?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to deny the variance.
Actually, a motion to approve, and then we would, so we would, the motion should be scripted in the affirmative, and then we vote.
I make a motion to approve a denial of...
No.
Why don't I, why don't somebody else do it?
We already know how you feel.
We didn't even say approve.
So, it's a motion to approve, which we, which either carries or fails.
Affirmative or negative vote.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the dimensional variance, application number 2020-004575thStreet.
Second.
Made by Ms. Pomeroy, seconded by Mr. Cameron. Vote Mr. Champetti.
No.
Ms. Pomeroy, no. Mr. Cameron?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Delisle?
No.
Five in the negative, the motion, motion fails. Attorney Magliacotti, thank you for your time.
No, thank you, thank you for your time. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening in speaking your mind and allowing us to know what the sentiment of the neighbors is. Okay, moving along. The next matter on the agenda is actually the last matter for this evening, is the application for 13 Bromfield Street, Shawn Mendez Handy, sorry, Shawn Mendez Handy and Som LLC. For the matter, special permit for non-conformities. Just going to read the legal notice. If I can ask, just members of the audience, if you could kindly just take conversations outside for us. The notice of public hearing, the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on an application for special permit for non-conformities filed by Shawn Mendez Handy and Som LLC for the property owned by Matthew and Annette Carr located at 13 Bromfield Street in the R2 zoning district and indicated as assessor's map and parcel 2656A/B. The hearing will be held at City Hall 60 Pleasant Street, Newburyport, Mass. on January 14th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., at which time all interested parties will be heard. Request is made under Newburyport zoning ordinance 9B2 extension or alteration. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals, permits, special permits and/or variances on the following request: to remove existing, an existing roof deck and replace it with an addition resulting in an upward extension of a pre-existing non-conforming side setback. May we hear from the applicant?
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, good evening. My name is Shawn Mendez. I'm the owner of Handy and Som. My place of business is located at 8 Main Street, Plastra, New Hampshire. We are a building contractor. I've worked for Mr. and Mrs. Carr for many years. I've done quite a bit of work for them in this house that they own here at Bromfield. It was about six months ago that they called me with an issue, it seemed to be that there, there was some leaking into their house, into their foyer on the first floor. Once we examined, we realized that the roof deck above was poorly constructed, it was not flashed properly, and really the only remedy would be to tear the deck off, to repair the roof, and then put the deck back on. They brought it, they brought the idea to me that they don't use the roof deck, it's not very accessible for them, there's some elevation heights that make it a little bit difficult for them to walk in and out. So they asked me if it might be feasible to change that space from the deck to an actual walk-in closet. So after pulling, after trying to obtain the permit, I realized that we were building on a non-conforming structure where we have a five-foot setback on one side and it looks like about a four-foot setback on the other side. So we're looking for relief for non-conformants, we're looking for a special permit to build for non-conforming side setbacks. So I don't know that it would constitute a hardship in the sense that there's an expense that's going to go into tearing off their deck and rebuilding.
Well, this is a special permit, so you don't, you do not have to show hardship.
No hardship?
No.
Going to say...
The criteria, however, is, among a few other things, but principally is that the proposed alteration is not significantly more detrimental than existing conditions. So if you wish to speak to that or simply say that, you know, we may have questions.
Sure. So basically, we have, if you have a drawing in front of you, if not, I'll demonstrate, we have a roof deck that's... So currently, there's a roof deck that is here, and what we're proposing is to change the two railings, one on the side, one to the back, to actual full walls, which would match the height of the second floor walls, and then to extend a roof off of the existing gable down to a shed to the outside. All finishes would match the existing house. So from the outside of the house, basically, you wouldn't be able to see the railings or the door, exterior door anymore, you would just be looking at a sided wall. So I think that would still be in fitting with not only the house, with this particular house, but with the other houses surrounding.
Was there anything else?
No.
Okay. Seeing no one in the audience, I'll go through the mechanics nonetheless. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application, seeing no one? It's not unusual to see no hands when we see no humans. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Same thing, no hands, no humans. Questions from the board?
So this is, from what I understand from the application, it's going to be a walk-in closet?
That's correct.
Any windows going to be put up on the other side? Because I only saw the back.
None.
Okay. No, that's the only question I have.
Just the locks, two walls and a roof. A roof. Seems like a good idea.
Any other questions? Mr. Cameron?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Delisle?
No further questions.
Ms. Webb?
Can this be seen from the street or is it in the back?
It's on the side. Could see it potentially coming down Bromfield, you could see it. There's a large tree that's right there, but the house across the street, again, because it's only a five-foot setback to that street, the house across the street has that same setback, so they're pretty close together. So from that house, you would be able to see it. But again, I think that once it's sided, it's going to blend in with the rest of the
Any other questions?
As laid out, it looks, it's not going to create a new non-conformity, and it certainly won't be, in my estimation, any more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I don't see how you could, personally, I don't see how I could not support it.
I'm going to concur with Mr. Moore.
Well said.
Thank you.
All right. I agree. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve special permit for non-conformities for 13 Bromfield Street, 2020-005.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Cameron, seconded by Mr. Moore to approve application number 2020-005, special permit for non-conformity with 13 Bromfield Street. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Mr. Pomeroy, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
All right. Five in the affirmative, motion carries, the application's approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. With that, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, that concludes our agenda for the meeting of January 14th, 2020. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting of the Newburyport ZBA, January 14th, is adjourned. Thank you very much. We can turn off our microphones now.